Yeah. You're welcome. Is everybody here? Just gonna wait for everybody to get here.
We're still waiting for a couple.
I'm sorry. You've gotten skinny. You don't need that much room anymore.
Okay.
We're waiting for Joe and Dave. I don't know. He got lost on the way. Joe coming?
The Chair would like to ask somebody to make a motion to go back in an open session.
So moved?
Second.
All of the base in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, we're in open session. With us tonight for the invocation is Mr. Bill Gaines from the General Baptist Church. And after that, Mr. Dave Hammond will do the pledge.
Yes, sir.
Everybody, please rise.
All right. Our Heavenly Father, how thankful we are for so many blessings that we enjoy. Just be with this meeting, Heavenly Father. Bless this meeting with your wisdom, courage, and humility. We're so blessed to live in this country that is so peaceful and historic. Help us to realize so many things that we presently enjoy was left to us to enjoy by those in the past. May we, by the grace of God, help and by the grace and help from God, protect and maintain these many blessings so that they may be passed on to those in the future. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Do we need to do roll again?
Councilman Cronin?
Here.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Here.
Councilman Hammond?
Here.
Councilman Hollander?
Here.
Councilman Klinghammer?
Here.
The next thing on our agenda is conditional use permits with Bill Number 4747. And the Exhibit C has been timely received and added to this bill, and it's ready for final passage. Is there a motion to?
Should I read the title?
Read the title and call it a roll.
Bill Number 4747, An Ordnance Granting Conditional Use Permit, CUP 19-02, For A Rural Recreational Activity For A Seasonal Pumpkin Patch To Nick Hargus, Applicant, And Samantha L. Knight, Property Owner.
Any questions or comments on Bill 4747? Seeing none, read the title and call a roll.
Bill Number 4747, An Ordnance Granting Conditional Use Permit, CUP 19-02, For A Rural Recreational Activity For A Seasonal Pumpkin Patch To Nick Hargus, Applicant, And Samantha L. Knight, Property Owner. Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Bill 4747 has been passed, and we move on to a public hearing for a capital improvements program for the year 2020-2024. Are there any speakers for the hearing?
Arne Dinoff.
Arne?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Dinoff, county public advocate and taxpayer. What I wanted to talk about about the Capital Five Year Plan is a couple of different things that I spoke about in past years. The first thing that I'd like to cut is the expenses on Gateway Greenlight Program. The Gateway Greenlight Program is kind of like a domino effect from the federal government through the state government, and we pay a lot of money through our road board, half cent sales tax that everybody pays at the retail outlets. It seems like traffic here in St. Charles County has gotten worse and worse, more backups and more bottlenecks. And the over $10 million in the last four or five years that the road board and Department of Transportation over our county has spent is yielding longer delays and more stacking of cars. So the Gateway Greenlight Program, in my opinion, doesn't work. I'm asking you, cut all funding to the Gateway Greenlight Program and cut and kibosh this program that just doesn't do our citizens justice. The other thing is engineering services for our county roads with our Department of Highways and Transportation and the realigning of different bridges, replacement costs, replacement with concrete and road projects. Instead of hiring out to contract engineers, I'd like to see if we could bring some in-house engineers on staff. We could save buco bucks in taxpayer money if we brought onsite county employees. As a matter of fact, we already have five or six or seven engineers in the Department of Highways, and I don't understand exactly what they do. Why are they not designing our projects? Why are they not saving taxpayer money? But you spend millions of dollars every year in design work and outside engineers to design our roads, replacement for bridges, and those type of things. Vehicles, we buy a lot of vehicles, and for some reason, our county wants to get new vehicles every two or three years. Now, in some cases, it might be warranted if you have damage because of a, we're self-insured with our police cars and other vehicles, but I'd like to see us do a more comprehensive maintenance program on our vehicles to keep them longer. Let's change the oil more often. Let's change the tires and the brakes, and let's keep those vehicles on the road more often. Let's get a software program to track this rather than contracting out the Firestone, which is milking our county left and right on maintenance issues, and there's really no oversight from the Department of Finance or the Fleet Management Services. So I'd like to see us bring that in-house. We've done it in the city of O'Fallon, and it's saved taxpayers a lot of money in keeping those vehicles longer. But every time I turn around, I see 25 new vehicles being bought from the police department when some of those police cars have only been on the road for about two years and they only have 60,000 miles on them. That's ridiculous when they have that top-heavy suspension system and the police package that makes that car go really four or five years and about 150,000 to 200,000 miles if they're well-maintained and taken care of. And why not buy inside of our county, supporting our neighbors and our businesses right here in St. Charles County with Ford dealership and the Dodge dealership and the Chevy dealership, rather than spending our taxpayer dollars in Columbia, Missouri, and Kansas City and other parts of the state where we're supporting their economy instead of keeping our money right here at home where those dealerships employ our neighbors and people who work right here in St. Charles County? I don't understand for an extra $50 when you pay somebody overtime to go to the other side of the state to get a vehicle, why we're not cutting our local vendors here, Macon or I'm sorry, Putnam Ford or the other Ford in O'Fallon. I'm sorry, Marshall. And Lou Fuse and those type of institutions that are here in our county for the extra $50. We would save money in the long run. And family arena expenses, that's a money pit. We spend a ton of money on marketing. We can't make a profit on the family arena for some reason, and I think we need to stop the capital improvement money pit of continuously putting money in that facility without a return on investment. Let's grow our parklands. Let's grow them smartly. We have a sales tax that's paid, and instead of that, it's called a user tax on internet purchases of over $2,000, and it's mostly paid by companies for the most part. Let's make sure that we're growing our parklands, buying parklands, and growing them smartly. And finally, our computer and technology costs have skyrocketed. We spend a ton of money or a ton of budget on a lot of servers, a lot of new computers, a lot of new technology, but yet we can't get the staffing rate. We can't get that comprehension correct to get our technology in the right direction. Every time you turn around, they're wanting a half a million dollars or they're wanting $800,000 for technology projects. So let's figure out what's going to work for us. Let's hang on to some of those desktop computers longer. You know, I know some people that are working off of a desktop, you know, six, eight years, and I think right here at the county, if people take care of that equipment and we're doing the necessary software updates, so we can save a lot of taxpayer money. So I appreciate you hearing my comments on the capital improvement plan for the next five years. It's time that this county council screw down the screws and be more conservative and not spend every dime, nickel, and penny that you can find because I know that you're trying to go after a tax increase with these people behind me, and I don't think that they're going to be very happy at the polls voting for a tax increase because you weren't cognizant and you weren't fiduciary responsibility for our taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers for the capital improvement program? Seeing none, we'll go to public comments. It's a time where anybody can come before the council and speak on any topic. Once a topic has been arrived at, we allow a total of six speakers, you know, three pro and three con. Are there any speakers?
Donna Hart. Hi, I'm Dr. Donna Hart. I am a resident of Eight Woods Hill Drive in St. Charles County, and I wanted to speak about unfettered development. Now, wasn't going to make any comments tonight, but I got the AAA magazine in the mail today. This goes to probably millions of people. And as it turns out, there's an article called Tales From The Trail, and it mentions that 400,000 visitors take advantage of the Katy Trail each year, and it's on the bucket list of many people throughout the United States, just to walk it. St. Charles County nicely featured in this article. In fact, most of it is about our county. This made me wonder if the council and the county executive are maximizing the advantages our county has, or are they, as someone mentioned at the planning and zoning meeting a few weeks ago, are they killing the goose that laid the golden egg? I think it's a matter of aesthetics versus development. Get it down to just that equation. And I want to quote something from here, from this article. "With the Missouri River on one side and a diverse landscape on the other, bikers and hikers explore deep forests, wetlands, prairies, and rolling pastures." Doesn't say a thing about developments or subdivisions, does it? Thank you for your time.
John Hickey?
Got my own timer to make sure I don't yammer on. Okay, well, thank you for the time. Unlike most everyone else in this room, I don't live in St. Charles County. I live in St. Louis County. But I also got the AAA magazine in my mailbox today, and it said, "Come to St. Charles County. We love tourism," so here I am. So I came to St. Charles County, and when I was driving the I-70 Bridge, there's a sign that says, "Katy Trail, Come To The Home Of The Katy Trail." So I thought, oh, more desire for tourism. This is great. I feel so welcome. But I'm afraid that the, I'm getting a mixed message, and I'm thinking that there's something coming over the I-70 Bridge besides tourists from St. Louis County. And what I'm talking about is the sort of politics where the county government is used to enrich insiders. Now, county executive Steve Stanger has just been busted for real estate deals like the Jamestown Mall, like the deal on, by West Tyson County Park, where there's been extensive publications in the Post-Dispatch how that public land was used for the benefit of the few. Now, here in this situation, we've got a development that is, I understand it, is over 200 units. If you use a rough cut of a half million dollars a unit, it's about $100 million. It's not all net, but there's going to be some net in there, I'm sure. That kind of money dwarfs the amount of money that Steve Stanger's real estate deals generated. Those were not nearly so lucrative. What are we doing? What else is similar? As the county, the county is changing the rules of the game. The county changed the slope disturbance from 30% to 50%. The county overruled its own planning and zoning commission and throughout that process. So as an outside observer, it seems to me that there's one set of rules for everyone else, but if you've got the access, the rules change for you. The planning and zoning people don't have to like it. The slope disturbance doesn't have to be right. You've just got to have the connections. So I hope that tourists continue to come over the Highway 70 Bridge. I hope Steve Stanger-type politics does not hitch a ride over the river as well because I think you all are, that an outside observer looking at this could say, "This does not look right. This does not look fair. Developers are not being treated equally, and public land is being used to make somebody wealthy." Thank you.
Ryan?
That was Claire. Claire, that was two speakers, sounded like two speakers against, so there should be two speakers for now.
Well, that was technically Public Land Development is what they had as their title, not Missouri Bluffs in particular.
Okay.
Ryan McLaren? That's fine. That's fine. We will return to the Missouri Bluffs after we have two other topics.
Okay. What's your, what's your pleasure?
Well, it should be, you go one and one, three, four, three against. So they've got two against and we have two.
Well, these, do you want to stick with Missouri Bluffs right now?
Well, that's what you started with.
Well, they didn't, they, they filled out their speaker card as Public Land Development.
That's one way of getting more speakers. So if you're going to play bad rules, play bad rules. You know, you could change the title. They brought up Missouri Bluffs. I said, "That's what they're talking about," so that's what we're talking about.
Okay.
So you have two guys, two people that are in favor of it. That's how we always do it.
Yeah, we're supposed to alternate, so.
Ed Chu?
My name is Ed Chu, and I live in St. Charles County, unincorporated St. Charles County. Appreciate being here. The county's planning and zoning commission has twice considered developer's proposal to build more than 200 residences atop the Missouri Bluffs overlooking the Katy Trail, and twice the commission has voted overwhelmingly against it. I understand your desire to present an image of growth and prosperity for all the world to see, but this is not the way to do it. I under, anyone who has witnessed this nation's steady trend towards suburban sprawl knows the development won't stop there. Today, it's a handful of houses and apartments surrounded by woods. Tomorrow, more trees will fall to make room for Starbucks and a gas station, and so on. Before you know it, everything that makes the Missouri Bluff special will be a distant memory. Weekly, my wife and I bike on this part of the Katy Trail, and for nature lovers and possibly even golfers, the site is perfect just as it is. The site might be, this might be a good time for the council to stop and look at what's best for the county's growth model. Not every open green space needs to be replaced by a house or apartment building. Not every vista needs to be, to become the exclusive view of the person rich enough to build a house there. Sometimes, communities are best served by leaving areas of natural beauty exactly as they are, and that's the case with the Missouri Bluffs. Preserve it, don't destroy it. Thank you.
Brad Goss?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Brad Goss. My address is 120 South Central Suite 700. We've been through this process for a long time, six years. We began the process with the county about two years ago. We did that in the direction of the university. They did not have to engage in this process, as you know. Councilman Hollander mentioned that at our last meeting. Through that process, we've made this development better. We have taken property out of the development and created as a park set aside. We've reduced the number of houses in the development approximately by half. We have added trails. We've added parking lots to help the spur trail for people who park so they can use the Katy Trail. And moreover, we pulled back from the development so there is no impact on the Katy Trail. And so as a result, people will be able to enjoy this property because it's currently not public land, as Councilman Hollander noted before. One of the things that we've heard a lot about is that the only people who speak in support of this are people like myself and people representing the developer. In point of fact, there are a lot of people who do support this development. We have a waiting list of over 250 people who are interested in this development, and a number of them chose to come tonight. And you know, as council members, that rarely, if ever happens, the people in support of a project come to be in support of it and show that support. So I'd like those who are in support to either raise their hand or stand up so that the council will see that there are actually people here tonight who are in favor of this project. Stand up if you're able, I'd certainly appreciate that. These are St. Charles County residents, and they like this project. We think through your help and through the public comment, we've made it a good project that is even now a better project, and I'd ask you to support it and to pass it tonight. Thank you.
Doug Teeman?
Good evening. My name's Doug Teeman. I'm an engineer with Pickett, Ray, and Silver. We are the engineers for the Bluffs Development. And I have presented this before you many times, and I won't go over all of the things I've talked about before. I just want to stress a few very important things. The, this development, as Brad has mentioned, has went through a lot of changes. We do think it has improved through those changes. We have worked very hard to listen to people's comments, to listen to comments from planning and zoning and from, from this board and address those comments. Our average lot size is over 30,600 square feet. The total site area here is 386 acres. We're disturbing 30 acres of that, which is 8% of that site. We are doing things that are done to improve the site with narrower roads and grades so we don't disturb the land and we don't have the runoff and we don't cut down the trees. Very simply, we are low impact, and we've tried very hard to do that. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them or talk about it further at any time. Thank you.
Tim Boosie?
Good evening. I'm vote, I'm here in support of the Bluffs project, and the two things I want to mention are that what is being voted on tonight is consistent with the process that we've gone through and that you voted on several months ago. This is just, we're coming back for the first part of the project, that approval. We looked at it, you know, more in detail. We presented that detail, and so it's important that it's, you understand it is consistent with what was previously approved. As far as the variances go that we requesting, we requesting, we requested variance specifically to impact the site less than if we had followed standard, County of St. Louis standards, County of St. Charles standards, primarily to minimize grading, minimize disturbance, and save trees. And lastly, I just want to say that there's been a tremendous disinformation campaign in the public and that this project is not able to be seen from the Katy Trail. It doesn't change the look of any, any of the bluffs from the Katy Trail or from 64, the Highway 6440. So at any rate, I really appreciate your time and thank you very much.
Has that been six speakers?
Yes.
Okay, then are there any other speakers on any other topic?
Yes, Bill Gaines.
Yes, folks, I realize you've got to set your priorities at different projects throughout the area, but I'm speaking about a problem I've got in the Fox Hill Road, Fox Hill or Riverview Drive. We, folks, we got grass and weeds of six foot tall. That is bad. We need to take more pride in our city. So if you would, if you could expedite taking care of that project for me, because Fox Hill Road particularly gets a lot of traffic. It feeds up on Fox Hill Estates, developed trails, Mammell Hills, Newtown, and for people to see weeds and grass, you know, six foot tall, that is, that is despicable. And if you would, when you cut it, if you would take the haul away of the grass because there's going to be a lot of waste when you, when it's cut. Even there's, there's a sidewalk going down from Fox Hill down to North 94. The sidewalk is even blocked by grass and weeds. So if you would, I would really appreciate if you could address that problem. I think a lot of folks would appreciate it. Also on Riverview Drive, it's real high. And there's a drainage ditch between Riverview Drive and Fox Hill Road that is all clogged up with grass and weeds and all like that. It needs, Joe Artworth years ago, he took care of that. But we, we need, we need some help, so I'd appreciate it if you could set that in your priority list. Thank you.
Ryan Clark?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Ryan Mulkerick. I'm here on behalf of Stephen and Aaron Zoner with respect to their zoning, rezoning application, rather, for the property located at 2676 Technology Drive. And as you may be aware, they submitted a zoning reapplication from a RE1, single family, to a C2 commercial designation in order for it to conform more to the area as it is currently. The zoning and commission has already signed off on this. They voted five to two to change it to a C2 designation. It's my understanding that the city of Dardine Prairie has submitted an application protesting this designation in large part because it doesn't comport with, with their own sort of, what they claim a C3 designation, and they're claiming that, you know, it would essentially be non-conforming with the surrounding area, which in my opinion, after viewing these, you know, documents, is not true. In fact, a lot of the conditional uses that the Dardine Prairie sites are uses under the C2 commercial zoning, which my clients are seeking. And I'm really here on their behalf and supporting their application and answering any questions that any of you may have. So that is it. Thank you very much.
Arne Dinoff?
Thank you very much, members of council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Dinoff, public advocate and resident. First of all, I also would like to be in the affirmative and support the application, RZ 1908, rezoning of land from residential 1E to C2 at 2676 Technology Drive. I don't believe that there's any additional information or facts to support the remonstrance of the city of Dardine Prairie. of the city of Dardine Prairie. The lay of the land is true. That's all turned from commercial to, I'm sorry, from residential to commercial uses. That's along the Technology Drive, the Technology Corridor. It's turned commercial. This comes down to property rights. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously approved this at their meeting in July, I'm sorry, at their meet, yes, at their meeting in July. And finally, the county planning director has reviewed it and says that it meets fully with our comprehensive plan that just was passed by the county council within the last six months, and it meets the definition of C2 zoning. So I ask that you unanimously approve this. It makes sense. It's about personal property rights, and it's for the best yield and use of the property. And I ask that you approve this application as submitted. There's been some kind of problem with the police department in my reporting, a internal investigation complaint of a detective, which I ran the license plate, and it comes back to the ownership of St. Charles County, and it's assigned to the Department of Police Detective Bureau. On Thursday, August 15th, 2019, at 2:00 PM, on Tom Ginever Avenue and going south on North Main Street, there was a speeding, unmarked police car with Missouri license plate Neetie Boston 9 Frank 6 Tom. And the plates come back to St. Charles County. It was a gray silver Chevy. It went to the Missouri Central Bank, and the officer went inside. I'm not sure if he did personal business or was county-related, but he was clocked doing in the city of Old Fallon over 50 miles an hour in a 30-mile zone. He was not activated any emergency lights or sirens. I contacted the chief's office, got no reply, contacted the chief secretary, the, trying to find out who the commander of Internal Affairs was. I got the runaround over there. Finally, I got Miss Lykem to reply back to me, because Mr. Hunt gave me a call. And I don't trust Mr. Hunt, as he violated the Fourth Amendment and Eighth Amendment rights of a person in Montgomery County with civil rights issues, and the county had to settle a lawsuit for $50,000 with this person. There was highway patrol evidence, deputies from Warren County that said that he did wrongdoing and felonies. He was charged with a felony. There were deputies from Montgomery County that put evidence forward that he did felonies. By making him from an officer to a captain, tripling his salary is detrimental to our residents, and I don't trust him in the position that he's in.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Are there speakers?
So do we. So do we.
Are there any other speakers?
No more speakers.
Okay.
County Executive, do you have an oral report?
I was tempted, but I think I'll go ahead and pass.
Oh, come on. Come on.
Blue-green algae. Sarah Evers is here from the Department of Public Health to give them a brief update on blue-green algae.
I'll go ahead and yield my time to Sarah.
I don't know if all of you have met Sarah, but Sarah was the Assistant Director of the department, and she's acting while Hope is out. Actually, I think we said that at the last time you spoke, so I'm sorry about that.
Good evening, gentlemen. So I was asked to speak this evening about some of the blue-green algae that you've heard in the news. And so I just wanted to give you just a little bit of information about the issue in general and how it relates to us here in St. Charles County. So, I'm going to try not to get too technical, but blue-green algae is a cytotoxin that is found in almost every natural body of water. So that includes oceans, it includes all of our natural streams and creeks. And so it's not something that is unheard of. It's heard in almost every state of the country. The actual blue-green algae feeds off of the nitrogen and phosphates that are naturally in all of our bodies of water, and it also feeds off of the sunlight. So we see it all the time, you just may not always notice that there's a bloom. So lately, there's been some attention in the news about some blooms that have been on the southeast coast. And that has most likely been because the nutrients in the water have been just right, and the sunlight has been just right in those bodies of water, so then the algae just feeds off of that and blooms. And it can be toxic to certain animals, including livestock, dogs, and it does affect humans, but we don't usually see as many cases affecting humans as we do in our animals. So the cases in the news have had to do with dogs that have gone into those bodies of water that have a bloom active, and then the toxins, because they're swimming in the water, they might drink it, or they're licking their fur after they come out of the water, so they're taking in more of that algae, and some of the toxins affect their, the neurological system in their body. So that's the part that we, we hear about in the news, and it's very traumatic for those that have it affected. But here in St. Charles County, there have been some calls that we have received that some citizens have thought that they've seen different algae blooms in different bodies of water. And the Parks Department does monitor all of our, all the bodies of water that are in our parks, but I just wanted to remind you that this is very naturally occurring. And the best way to deal with the algae is to let it run its cycle, because it feeds off of those nutrients in the water. If, once the nutrients are all used up, or if there's a huge change in the turbidity of the water, like last night's rain, will change the complete content of that natural body of water and give it good water movement, and then the algae will basically have to dissolve, or its nutrients supply will go away and it'll die. So sometimes there'll be a smell after that algae bloom dies, and people get concerned off of that smell as well, but it's just the normal occurrence. If you actually go and try to do anything about an algae bloom, usually you'll make it worse, because that algae bloom will just multiply and move to other parts. So if you let it run its cycle, and you let it use up its nutrient sources, then usually it'll just go away. Are there any questions that you might have that I could answer for you?
Do we have a Laker Pine that's still closed now, or do you have an estimate on how long it will remain cordoned off?
I would have to refer that question to Ryan and Parks as to how long they plan on keeping that closed, but really, it's just in best, it's difficult to test for that, that type of cytotoxin, and it can be very expensive, and it usually only will test the water at that given point. So the best plan of action is to just stay out of natural body, bodies of water if you have any concern that you might, there might be algae in there. Don't go swimming in them, don't go, let your animals go in them is the best way to, to proceed. But I'll let Ryan talk about it.
Yeah, we got a report of a potential bloom at Indian Camp Creek on Wednesday, and we went out there with our natural resources crew.
Speaking to the mic.
We went out to our, with our natural resources crew, and cordoned off the lake, caution taped all the access off, took three water samples in the lake there. We sent one off for a general water quality testing, and that came back today and showed that the water quality was really good. And we sent off two samples to test for blue-green algae, but like Sarah said, the test, we've, we've contacted many different biologists and people from around the state, and they've basically said good luck, because you can get a positive test, and then you can test the exact same sample a couple hours later, and you get something totally different. It's, it's a real weird thing when it comes to testing. And like Sarah said, you know, that test is for one specific spot in the water at a specific time with a specific temperature, and, you know, those conditions change hourly, daily, you know, weekly. So, we are getting it tested, and, you know, until we get those tests back, we'll keep the lake closed. And, you know, from what we've been told to, it's, it's just best to keep it closed until we know, you know, two weeks or so after, and we know it runs course, so.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else? County Executive?
No, sir.
All right. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything to be removed, or is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda has been, been approved. We move on to resolutions, starting with bill resolution number 1903.
Resolution 19-03, sponsored by council as a whole. A resolution adopting the 2020 capital program and strategic plan. Whereas the St. Charles County Charter, Article 6, Section 6.301, requires the county council to adopt the capital program and strategic plan, the plan, no later than two months prior to the final date of the submission of the budget, and whereas the St. Charles County Charter, Article 6, Section 6.201, requires that on or before the 5th day of November or the first working day after the 5th of each fiscal year, the county executive shall submit to the county council a budget for the ensuing fiscal year and an accompanying message, and whereas the county executive has presented the plan to the county council, a public hearing has been held on it, and it has been made available for inspection by the public. Now therefore be it resolved by the county council of St. Charles County, Missouri, as follows. Section 1, the plan attached hereto as Exhibit 8, known as the Capital Improvement Program years 2020 through 2024, is hereby approved. Section 2, compliance with all the terms of the Capital Improvement Program years 2020 through 2024 shall be the responsibility of the county executive.
Are there any questions or comments on resolution number 19-03? Mr. Cronin?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask Mr. Schner to come up here. I've got just a couple of questions about this, if you don't mind, Bob. Since you sat, you're sitting through the meeting anyway, we thought we'd use your technical expertise on a couple of things. I asked Claire to pull up the 16, 17, and 18, and 19, actually, capital programs, and I saw a few things that kinda, that kinda looked a little different to me, and I thought maybe if you could just explain to me a little bit what's going on. One thing I noticed, for instance, what we projected last year for computer equipment, now this year is darn near double. We went from four and a half to down, almost $9 million. And the other thing I saw was a significant projection in, a downward projection in money brought in from the parks use tax. And I thought, I'd just like to find out, you know, what the reasoning for that is. On the parks use tax, we show $13 million coming in 2020, then dropping to $1,006,021, and, you know, keep, continue to go down. Is there reasons for that?
Primary, the reason for that is that we're not sure with the, the advent of the Lakeside 370 Amazon plant as to what's going to happen to the use tax. That plant, I think, or that facility, I think, opened this month, if I'm not mistaken. So, we don't know, and the state will not tell us, and probably can't tell us at this point, what the status of our use tax is going to be. Up till now, Amazon has been voluntarily paying the county for use tax for shipments here in Missouri. They've been doing that since February of 17, I believe it is. But we, we're not forecasting that revenue, because with all of the changes going on here, and now that Amazon has nexus in St. Charles County, we don't know if we're going to be, still be receiving that revenue or not, so we're not budgeting for it.
But that's almost a 90 percent reduction in the use tax. Would that, Amazon amount to that amount? We're going from 13 million down to $1,006,000.
It's, they're, they're pulling down 100,000 a month. We have been, $1,002,000, $1,003,000, somewhere on that, on that basis annually.
From Amazon?
Yes.
Then, then how will we be getting from 13 million to 1.6 million? That's, that's the question.
It's not quite adding up. It's not quite adding up, he says.
It's like, yeah, it's not quite adding up to me, at least. I mean, if you look in page, I think it's page 6, it shows parks use tax for 2020, 13, 13.9 million, dropping to 1.6 million in '21. So, I mean, that's like a 90 percent reduction, you know, almost, you know, it's a $12 million reduction in use tax.
Hold on a minute, while I find your page.
I mean, I understand this is a resolution, and it's just kind of a pie in the sky or down the road. I think this was on, it was beyond the second spreadsheet of the program. So, I mean, we can, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with passing this and with a, for the better explanation later.
On that same page, we have capital projects going from 11 million to 30 million.
I'm sorry, what page are you on? I'm not.
Actually, I think the sixth page, Bob. Did you go up to?
It's called plan? Okay.
Capital Program and Strategic Plan Funding Source, summarized.
Okay. These are expenditures, these are not revenues.
Okay, well, it says funding source summarized by year.
That these are expenditures by funding source, or...
Okay, so we're basically going to cut park spending then from 13 million to a million from 2021 to 2021, 2020 to 2021? Ryan may not like that too much.
No.
Ryan's opened a lot of parks in the last year, too.
Hey, and Bob, I don't want to put you in the spot. I honestly didn't have the time to question this prior to the meeting, so I'm fine with passing this resolution, trusting you'll do the right thing, make sure we have enough money to get through next year.
You wish to move along, then? Any other questions?
Mr. Klinghammer, is any?
The short answer is, well, I, I don't know why, the only thing I can think of is there's a decimal off on some of these numbers, because...
Oh, that would explain it.
It shouldn't drop by any other means.
Okay. And the, and the capital projects, Mr. Klinghammer asked the question about the capital projects going from 11 to 30. Would that be a jail rebuild or something like that in there?
That makes sense when it's an expenditure. I was looking at it like you were, Joe, as, as income.
Yeah, these are not revenues.
The title was a little misleading.
But even with expenditures, we're talking about spending $20 million more in capital projects? Is that for possible jail or something like that, Joanne? You have any clue?
Well, it's not, no, that's not related necessarily to the jail. It's to other projects that are going on around the county. Roofs, tuck pointing, HVAC, you know, a lot of these buildings were actually, they're built or renovated within a three to five-year span of each other, and so they're all aging their central core systems at the same time. So Christine has done a systematic review of all of the deferred maintenance that has gone on and tried to place that into a schedule of needed maintenance.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I saw a lot of things like we're spending $3 million in emergency communications, and then drops to 69,000 the following year. I mean, I'm guessing that's billed out of the EOC, another 3 million bucks in that building?
Well, aside from the building itself, you have the, the core equipment that actually runs the 911 system and all of that, and there's technology refreshes. As you know, when we bought that, we explained that it has to be periodically updated. If you go and, and buy a software, you get a certain number of versions from these companies, and then they invest in a bigger technology jump, and you have to jump with them in a certain number of versions of that. You don't have a choice.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm fine if the rest of the council's fine, moving forward. This stuff's all going to come back to us in terms of bills down the road and next year or so.
All right. If there's no other questions or comments, we'll...
No, sir.
Read the resolution and call roll.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, the one thing that the, that the resolution says in section 2 is compliance with all the terms of the Capital Improvement Program shall be the responsibility of the county executive. As you all know, the charter requires us to do this, but it's not binding. What's binding is what you do in November of each year. So, that's a good reason to go on with this, and Bob can clarify everything at the next meeting, because none of this, none of this is binding on anybody. It's, it's a roadmap for us to start the budgeting process.
One of the things that, that happens pretty much every year in this plan is that the focus is on the next year, 2020, and expenditures out seem to, to wane here. So, the 2020, year 2020 is, is what most departments focus on when they're providing their information. And when I, when I look at the master sheet for the, for the Parks Department, I see, I see departmental totals that are much higher than this in subsequent years, for example. So I'll, I'll look at this information. I don't think information in the detail of the report translated to the summary that you see here. So, I'll look into that and get an answer for you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
All right, then. All right, then, read the title and call roll.
Resolution 19-03, a resolution adopting the 2020 capital program and strategic plan. Councilman Neelam?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Resolution number 19-03 is passed, and we move on to bills for final passage, starting with bill number 4748.
Bill number 4748, an ordinance of the county of St. Charles, Missouri, approving the preliminary plat and the final development plan for the Missouri Bluffs PUD.
Are there any questions or comments on this, bill number 4748?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to table this bill.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Bill 4748 has been tabled. And we move on to bill 4749.
Bill number 4749, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri, by rezoning land from A agricultural district to R1B, single-family residential district...
Are there any questions or comments on this, bill number forty seven, forty eight?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to table this bill.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Uh, bill forty seven, forty eight has been tabled. And we move on to bill forty seven, forty nine.
Bill number forty seven, forty nine, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A agricultural district to R1B single family residential district per application 19 dash zero seven.
I think we'll suspend, we'll suspend this for a moment, let the crowd lead.
Yep.
Thanks, Joe.
Don't you just miss it?
I don't know what happened either, but they're consistent with the previous years, so I have a...
Ladies and gentlemen, have attention please.
Nice to meet you, Larry.
How are you doing?
We'll resume the meeting, starting off with, are there any questions or comments on bill forty seven, forty nine? Saying none? Read the title and call the roll, please.
Bill number forty seven, forty nine, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A agricultural district to R1B single family residential district per application RZ 19 dash zero seven. Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel? Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Bill number forty seven, forty nine has passed, and we'll move on to bill forty seven, fifty.
Bill number forty seven, fifty, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from R1E single family residential district to C2 general commercial district as per application RZ 19 dash zero eight.
Any questions or comments on bill forty seven, fifty?
I've talked to both parties involved here. I talked to Mayor Zucker, and I also talked to the applicant, and I, I have a tendency to believe that, um, that these, I understand what Mr., what Mayor Zucker's trying to accomplish, but I also understand that I believe that the property owner has property rights as well, and some of the things that he may want to do may not be very too much from what their other zoning is. I also know that we did it across the street for U-Haul, same scenario. They wanted, Dardine Prairie wanted us to have them zone, uh, in X, and we did it. We let them do what they wanted. They were opposed to that. It's not a bad looking development. So, I don't think I'm in favor of trying to limit this guy's...
Can you pull that microphone?
Limiting this guy's, um, right to sell his property. That's just, it's a property right issue for me.
Okay. Mr. Cronin?
Mr. Zonard sent us an email with his side of the stories, and since he sent it to the council, it was public record. So, I sent it to Mayor Zucker for comment, and he replied back to me today. And this is a tough one, because I'm, I'm pretty big on property rights, too, but I kinda also understand where Mr. Zucker's coming from. And basically, what he's stating right here is I think it'd be a huge disservice to have this small property surrounded by C zoning, C3's county zoning with a use that is incompatible with our C3 businesses. The U-Haul that Mr. Brazel's talking about is on the other side of Highway 64. So, I, I get what Mr. Zucker has to say, too, and I also understand what Mr. Zonard's saying, and it's a shame that we couldn't get those guys in the same room and work this out. That being said, I guess we get paid to do the dirty work, so that's my position, at least. It's a tough one, dear.
Any other questions or comments?
If, if I could just add something real quick?
Well, I mean, yes, sir, come on up. He represents the applicant, so.
Uh, you know, I believe that, that changing this to C2 is within, you know, your, your long-term plans, and was already signed off on by the, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and, and represents an opportunity to, you know, add some jobs, I think, to the community, and also to get rid of a property that, quite frankly, doesn't fit anymore. I mean, if you've seen, and I'd be happy to provide you a, that sort of aerial picture of it, it clearly is non-conforming, and would be better served as a, as a C2 designated commercial property. And I could also show you, you know, the, I know the Dardine Prairie, you know, sites, their C3 designations, they're really not far off from C2, if you really look at them in great detail. And I'd be happy to provide you a copy of those as well, so you can review them if that would interest you, so, that's all I understand.
All right. Anything else? Then let's read the title and call the roll.
Bill number forty seven, fifty, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from R1E single family residential district to C2 general commercial district as per application RZ 19 dash zero eight. Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
No.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
No.
Councilman White?
Yes. So, bill forty seven, fifty has passed. We'll move on to bill forty seven, fifty one.
Bill number forty seven, fifty one, an ordinance of the county of St. Charles, Missouri approving a preliminary plat for the re-subdivision of Lot 12 of Valley Acres.
Any questions or comments on bill forty seven, fifty one? Saying none? Read the title and call the roll.
Bill number forty seven, fifty one, an ordinance of the county of St. Charles, Missouri approving a preliminary plat for the re-subdivision of Lot 12 of Valley Acres. Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Bill forty seven, fifty one has passed, and we'll move on to bill forty seven, fifty two.
Bill number forty seven, fifty two, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designate to execute contract amendment number 002 for autopsy services with the Missouri Department of Social Services for child death autopsy services.
Any questions or comments on bill forty seven, fifty two? Saying none? Read the title and call the roll.
Bill number forty seven, fifty two, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designate to execute contract amendment number 002 for autopsy services with the Missouri Department of Social Services for child death autopsy services. Councilman Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Bill forty seven, fifty two has passed, and we'll move on to bill forty seven, fifty three.
Bill number forty seven, fifty three, an ordinance requiring the fingerprinting of applicants in positions within St. Charles County government for criminal history record information from the Missouri State Highway Patrol and Federal Bureau of Investigation, and creating section 115, point 115 ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, in the Personnel Administration Program. Councilman Cron...
Any questions or comments? Questions or comments first?
Yeah.
Saying, do you?
No.
Okay, saying none? Read the title and call the roll.
Bill number forty seven, fifty three, an ordinance requiring the fingerprinting of applicants in positions within county government for criminal history record information from the Missouri State Highway Patrol and Federal Bureau of Investigation, and creating section 115, point 115, ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, in the Personnel Administration Program. Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Klinghammer?
Yes.
Bill forty seven, fifty three has been passed, and we'll move on to bill number forty seven, fifty four.
Bill number forty seven, fifty four, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an amendment to the East West Gateway Council of Governmental Financial Assistance Subaward Agreement approved by ordinance 19 dash 016 for microwave router upgrades in St. Charles County sites.
Any questions or comments on bill forty seven, fifty four? Saying none? Read the title and call the roll.
Bill number forty seven, fifty four, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an amendment to the East West Gateway Council of Governmental Financial Assistance Subaward Agreement approved by ordinance 19 dash 016 for microwave router upgrades at St. Charles County sites. Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Bill forty seven, fifty four has been passed, and that concludes bills for final passage. And we move on to bills for introduction, beginning with forty seven, fifty five.
Bill number forty seven, fifty five, requested by Joe Brazel, sponsored by Joe Brazel, Mike Elam, Mike Klinghammer, an ordinance creating a new chapter 170 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, relating to the St. Charles County Port Authority and Port District.
Any questions or comments on bill forty seven, fifty five? Mr. Cronin?
Yes, sir, I have multiple concerns about this that I've shared with the council, and I would suggest that any councilman that's thinking about voting for this needs to read chapter 68 of Missouri revised statutes. This bill is based on chapter 68 of the Missouri revised statute. I do not like the fact that, that several different things, one granting eminent domain to a non-elected appointed board for the entire county. I think that's something that we need to address a little bit closer. Also, that, within this district, which the district boundaries is the entire county, that same non-elected board would have the ability to set sales, use, and real property tax accord in Missouri statute. Additionally, the composition of this board by statute would have to be, would have to consist of at least three members of the opposite party that, of what most voters in this St. Charles County belong to. And additionally, by us approving a port authority for county, it eliminates the abilities, the cities of this county's ability to apply to their own port authority. And I think that discussion should at least be, be taken forward with the cities. This is all in, on, on, in the, on the state statutes under chapter 68. And if you notice on page one of the bill, about the middle of it, it's, says that the bill is consistent with chapter 68. So, because of these concerns, I think it might be prudent that we have a work session, get some economic development folks in from, from some of the cities, to see what their opinion of this is. I think we need to find out if there's a way we could better limit eminent domain, because if you do a Google search on eminent domain abuse by port authorities, you'll find a whole bunch of that going on, and you don't have to look too far. You can look across the river to Ms. Sweeney, who's committed, who was the chairman of the St. Louis County Port Authority, who, who pleaded guilty to felony corruption. You can also look at the Port of Lincoln, in Lincoln County, with all the controversies surviving that. So, I just want to make sure that we don't set up a new political subdivision with lots of political power that's including eminent domain, without really doing our time and doing our homework and doing it correctly.
Are there any questions or comments?
I do. So, I can tell you what the economic development directors think, because Scott Drachnik was with us, and I believe, Mike, were you still with the city of O'Fallon when we first started talking about this? Were you already with the county when we brought in the economic development directors for a work session? Just started with the county. So, we brought in all of the economic development directors for the county, from every city, and we asked them for their opinion of this before we went down this road. And Jennifer was in that room, so was John, and I believe they were unanimously in favor of the port authority. Do I remember that correctly? Yes, so they were all in favor of that. I would tell you, I can look across the river, and I can come up with tons of examples of bad behavior that I don't think we should follow. Setting up a port authority is not one of them. I would tell you, I believe the legislature last year approved just over 11 million dollars for port authorities throughout the state. If I'm correct, there's 16 port authorities, is that right? Or is it 15? 15 or 16 port authorities throughout the state. Right now, St. Charles County sends money from this county to Jefferson County that is then packaged and sent back to the port authorities around the state. Not in equal amounts, but for different projects that they have. They put in their request for that, and they get that money back. We are the largest county in the state of Missouri that does not have a port authority. By far, the largest county in the state of Missouri that does not have a port authority. We used to have a port authority back in the day, and they took the little far peninsula in the top northeast corner of our county, and they sectioned that off and says, that's our port authority. And that's where you get the story of Darby Stitch from 1974, where they wanted to basically cut a canal through there, so you didn't have to go all the way around the point. It was a bad idea to begin with, and it was a really dumb idea to just take a section that's basically, Mr. Klinghammer will tell you, it's basically floodland. It's a fine section of the county, if there ever was one. It is a fine section of the county if you want to do floodland or fishing, you know? Boating, it's really good, especially, you can, you can boat to your crops out there right now. So, what we want to do with this bill is set the whole county boundary as part of the port authority. Therefore, we can use money that comes back to this county for economic development projects. Not, a port authority, most people don't realize this, because I really didn't until we got into this, a port authority does not have to have anything to do with water. As a matter of fact, there is a county in this state who has a port authority that is completely landlocked, and there's no water there, other than maybe some ponds and lakes, that does not have algae in it, that I know of. So, there you go. So, we would really like the opportunity to try to recoup some of the money that St. Charles County is sending to help economically advantage other counties in the state. So, we're basically helping them do better. I, I understand your concerns for eminent domain. I think there are protections against that that we can look at, and I think the Transportation Department has set up this restrictions. It says, these are the powers that are given to port authorities, and I think we can do a lot for the citizens of St. Charles County if we put this tool in our arsenal for an economic development.
Mr. Brazel?
Also, Mike, did I mention that our county has more riverbank than any other county in the state of Missouri, which is Mississippi?
I believe it's 107 miles.
Yeah, Missouri and Mississippi. Couple things, I agree with some of the things Mr. Cronin is saying about eminent domain, and that's one reason why the county executive would appoint the board approved by the council. And I would like just to say in here that at every, whenever the term expires, they have to be reappointed.
Right.
With approval of the, it doesn't just automatically go. So, that has to say there. So, that's how you control out of control board members that are not doing what the electorate wants them to do. And so, that's one check and balance. Also, we tried to put in, there's multiple projects we tried to do in the county. We would like to have a marina at one of the, at Klondike Park, down in the, in the Missouri River, which the Army Corps of Engineers kiboshed that. We'd like to have a ferry going across at Klondike Park to Labadee. They kiboshed that. So, without a port authority, we have no authority. And that's why we, and from my view, those are some of the projects I would look forward to do. Also, up in Mike Klinghammers district by Noah's Ark, that project's been stalled over and over again, which is a great riverwalk project, that a lot of big cities do those type of projects, and we keep getting stopped by federal governments and other kind of governments. So, we need authority over our waterways, and like Mike said, we had a, a port authority in the 90s, and it just, I guess they decided they didn't need it, for whatever reason, I don't know. But most counties, large counties, have port authorities, and so you gotta have checks and balances. I agree, if there's a way to figure that out, but I don't know if, if there is, but, anyway. So, I think this is important to push forward, with, with some work.
I think it needs a lot of work, and let me just explain, St. Louis City has a port authority, and it's defined by the districts along the river, the 19 mile district, okay? Section 68 of state law states, states the area designated as a port district shall, shall be or could be reasonably connected to the business of a port, okay? So, limiting the, the district to the areas along the river would accomplish your goals, and maybe Mike's goals, within a mile of the river, okay? But would also keep a industrial park developer in O'Fallon or Wentzville from stomping all over the property rights of an individual out in that, that area. If you don't think it's not gonna happen, it's gonna happen, okay? It happens all over the country, just, and we're, right now, we're blessed with having a really honest, despite what some of these folks might be in the audience, we've got a very honest and ethical county government. But you don't have to go too far to find county governments that aren't that way. So, I also worry about the potential for abuse by setting up a new political subdivision with this amount of power. I would ask the county council to see if there's a way that we can curtail either the, the ability for that, for that board to go to eminent, eminent domain, use of eminent domain. Maybe that could be approved by both the county council, and with the signature of the county executive as an additional check and balance. I also think we ought to think about... I also think we ought to think about limiting the scope of this district not to include the entire county.
Very good. Is there anything else on Bill 4755? Saying now, let's move on to Bill 4756.
Bill number 4756, requested by Dr. Mary Kay, sponsored by John White, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute amendment number one to program services contract with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for enhanced opioid surveillance, toxicology testing reimbursement.
Any questions on Bill 4756? Saying now, let's move on to Bill 4757.
Bill number 4757, requested by Scott Drachnik, sponsored by John White, an ordinance authorizing execution of documents for and receipt of grant funds up to the amount of $330,000 from the Missouri Division of Workforce Development and further amending Ordinance 18-117 by providing related supplemental appropriations to the budget of the Workforce and Business Development Fund to administer a new apprenticeship program and partnership with Franklin Apprenticeship.
Any questions on Bill 4757? Saying now, let's move on to Bill 4758.
Bill number 4758, requested by Mike Carlburt, sponsored by John White, an ordinance amending Sections 277.510, 277.920, and 405.5072 in the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, relating to medical marijuana land use and safety regulations.
Any questions or comments on Bill 4758?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mike, do you have some maps you want to show them?
Or we can wait and do it next meeting, too, but Mike's got some maps that will show you the need for this bill, I think.
Talk about the next meeting. I mean, it's pretty easy to understand what he's doing. I think you got, we're okay, Mike.
Pretty much.
It's pretty. If you worked really hard at it, if you want to show them off.
We worked really hard at it. Yeah, we, staff wanted to take a look at, under the current ordinance, the location of how that buffer areas would work. And so we actually were able to, let me pull this up here.
There it is.
So this is a, the map here, let me get this out of here. The dark areas, there are the incorporated areas. So everything outside of that is the lighter, is in the unincorporated. The point I wanted to look at here is there's three different scenarios. The first scenario is if the, under the current ordinance, so this is the areas in blue are where the medical marijuana facilities would not be permitted. So everything in the dark blue, so the light areas would be where they are permitted under the current buffer requirements for daycare, educational facilities, house of worship, residential zoning, and residential use. So for the most part, it really very much limits where any facilities could go. So I wanted to show that. If we go to the second scenario, which is item B here, turn that off, that is the scenario of with the residential uses turned off. So just residential zoning. So that's kind of the difference there. I'll turn that other one back on, and that will show you the, kind of the difference. So the pink areas are where they would not be permitted versus the...
The white areas is where it is?
Yeah. So you have the dark, you have the pink, and let me turn this one off here. So that's under the current ordinance, that's the dark areas. If you turn that off under the, if you remove the zoning, and if you remove all residential uses entirely, it's pretty much almost everywhere. So it's that dramatic of a difference between residential uses, residential zoning, and having them all in there. So the current draft, as it's currently written, would be closer to this scenario, with the exception, the one exception we don't have is the residential zoning, or, excuse me, the residential uses in an agricultural zoning district. That map does not show that. So this, there would be some more areas that would be impacted beyond this. But I just wanted to show that as part of staff having to measure out that distance, this is the tool that we've come up with to be able to do that. So we're able to see down to a specific address that area. And it was so dramatic when we inputted this with the current ordinance, it basically wipes it out for most of the county. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I thought it was worthwhile, that that kind of information was important.
So by putting the restrictions on it, it pushes it in the more suburbia and more into the rural areas, right?
Correct.
So if we just took the restrictions completely off, it would put it more in urban and city areas, right?
There would be more opportunities in there. The cities, in comparison, the city of Lake St. Louis is really the only one that has a residential use as well or zoning, and they have a 500-foot distance separation for residential. So they lowered it because they knew that would really impact a lot of their areas. St. Charles City has halfway houses and correctional facilities as part of, as additional one. But for the most part, residential really is only us and the city of Lake St. Louis.
What about St. Peter's?
They do not have a residential exclusion.
Okay.
So...
So your proposal is to make it what?
Well, the draft here, it just removes residential uses except for if they're in an agricultural zoning. There seem to be some concerns about those locations, and so we wanted to keep that in there, so...
So this would be the map of...
Close. The residential, the agricultural, the houses within agricultural zoning is not identified on this map. So there would be some additional exclusions on this one. We'd have to create a fourth layer, basically.
But nowhere near what the blue was in your first one.
Correct.
Because with the first map, we're pretty much out of the running.
That's correct.
As a county. You wouldn't be able to pretty much do it anywhere here.
I had a scenario, just for your information, where in order to measure residential uses, we had to determine where residents may be that we're not even aware of. And in fact, one was on, I'll get very specific here, but basically it was in an area of a gas station with a retail station, a retail bay that was empty. And I did the 1,000-foot radius, and nothing, no zoning, no residential was around there. When I mentioned it to the broker that the residential use is one of the categories, he said, "Oh, well, so-and-so lives above their liquor store across the street." So I went and looked at the assessors and found out that it was assessed as a residential use. So a liquor store nixed a medical marijuana facility going in across the street because somebody lived above it. So that's, that, you know, and it's difficult for staff to be able to identify that every time, so...
That's not ironic at all, is it?
No, not at all.
You've got hundreds of acres in my district that you have zoned agricultural, single-family residential houses on it.
Correct.
So those, they would be impacted to the benefit by this.
Right.
Yes.
Yep. So that map would definitely be updated with that information.
And we better not tell everybody that you can get out of paying commercial property tax rates by just moving into where you work.
I don't know how that happened.
I don't know how that happened either.
So anyway, just for your information.
Thank you.
Nice maps. Well done.
Any other questions on 4758? Then that concludes bills for introduction. We go to table bills. Is there anything to come off the table?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to remove table bill number 4721.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, 4721 is on the table.
I'd also like to make a motion to amend bill number 4741, replace it with substitute bill 4721, notwithstanding the requirements of ordinance number 17-038. Bill number 4721 requires an amendment by substitution due to the various changes in the language of the bill.
What'd you say?
Exactly.
Glad you practiced that before the meeting.
Notwithstanding the Klinghammer amendment, we are still good to go.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, wait a minute.
You just need to ask if there are any discussion, is there any discussion or amendment of the substitute a council member would like to offer at this time?
That's what I said.
So I would tell you in discussion time, which I heard you asked for, so this bill has gone through some changes. The Director of Administration reached out to me last week, talked about some concerns that she had of the bill, and we agreed to make some amendments in it. She had three changes that she suggested. I agreed with two of the three, correct? I agreed with two of the three. We agreed to disagree on the third change.
And a definitional change.
Yes.
Of substance.
So all in all, I think we had a nice meeting of the minds, so I'm submitting this substitute bill for your consideration tonight.
Okay, Mr. Cronin?
I've read the bill, and my only question is to Joanne, is the Health Department feel comfortable with being able to enforce the bill as it's currently written? Okay?
Is that the Health Department without the director?
I shouldn't say comfortable, how about able?
With the acting director working the jobs?
Is it workable for you folks?
I believe that the Health Department feels this is a more workable version to have registration rather than permits, and they no longer have to promulgate rules because we don't really have an official rule promulgation process. We have ordinances, and so you are adopting by ordinance certain things.
Okay. And I'm very happy that we're trying to regulate this before we try to ban it, but I'd like to fire off a warning to the industry that if this stuff is abused and becomes a public health issue to this county, we'll revisit this with the idea of a ban down the road, okay? So...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Yeah, I will support the bill. My preference, though, is the original bill to outlaw kratom altogether. I think I'm kind of doing this in reverse myself, you know? I think once the, you know, it's been medically proven that it is not harmful, then maybe we can regulate it. But I think regulation is, you know, at least a step forward, so I'll support the bill.
Anyone else?
I'd like to ask a question. In the discussions that Mr. Elam and Joanne had, Joanne, I spoke to you a little bit about this, Section 3, that was, you were suggesting that they have put out a label notice or warning, was that in a flyer form, or was that on a package, or what was it?
Just to provide a flyer, you know, when you go to fill a prescription, you get certain notices with that. And having heard Dr. Riley, who couldn't be here tonight because of her pregnancy, I believe the baby's actually been born, as I've heard her do education over and over, she's made three points continuously, the first being, "These products aren't regulated by any regulatory body, and there's no purity standard when they manufacture them, and so there's no dosing recommendation that's official." You know, if it's, if you even go to get an over-the-counter medication, you get those things, and they have to be studied. This hasn't been studied. Secondly, that when kratom's being taken, particularly if it's being taken in combination with any medication that depresses respiration, benzodiazepine, like somebody might have for depression, or an over-the-counter medication, that somebody really needs to talk to their doctor, because in sufficient quantities kratom, this doctor Riley indicated, the studies are showing that kratom does depress respiration. They feel there's been some accidental interactions that have resulted in death from that. And then the third thing is just to let people know that it does affect the MU opioid receptors in the brain, so that if you have somebody who's trying to avoid products that do that...
Okay, so let me understand. So when you get over-the-counter medicine or other kind of prescriptions, they do hand you some reform? Is that what you're saying?
Sure. Anytime you fill a prescription, you get the...
It's not really stapled to your prescription. And you can tell how effective it is by the fact that you don't realize that, and it's put on every package that you get at every prescription that you have picked up in the years. So it's, here's my point of why I said, I think you just made my point for me, as to, I understand what she's talking about. I think it puts an undue illness on the person who's trying to put this out, and they're going to have to put this out on top of, I mean, staple it on all their prescriptions, I guess, or all their samples that they, not samples, but every time they sell something, yeah, they would have to do that. But obviously, it works well, based upon your question.
Well, I'm just suggesting, since this came before us, and we're trying to cover our bases as county government, that if everybody else is required to do it, and every other over-the-counter medicine is required to do it, I would merely suggest that I'd like to add this, offer it as an addendum. I agree with his substitute bill, but also offer this as an addendum. If it gets voted down, it is voted down. But I think that the extra you put into it just makes a little bit of sense. I don't think the little effort that it takes to do this is asking that much. I mean, when you're talking, we went from going to a ban to doing this, this was really not that big of a requirement.
So are you going to add a minimum to it?
Yeah, I'm going to offer, I'd like to make this amendment to his substitute bill. I'd like to make a motion, and if I get a second, that's fine.
Second.
What's his motion again? What's your motion?
It's, okay, it's this, did you guys, nobody got this? It's add the following requirements, Section 237.500 labeling requirements. Joanne, you want, you go through this real quick. You're...
So the language was, on labeling requirements is to add, "The Department of Public Health shall ensure that all sellers provide a written statement of the following in no less than 10-point type with each sale of a kratom product. A, kratom products are not regulated by any regulatory body, comma, there is no purity standard for manufacturing, and there are no dose recommendations arising from study of the substance, period. B, kratom, comma, particularly if being taken in combination with any medication that depresses respiration, comma, whether the medication is a prescription or over-the-counter, comma, should not be taken without consulting your physician, period. And C, kratom has been established to affect the MU opioid receptors in the brain, period."
That's a motion for an addendum.
So is there a second?
Terry, second, yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose?
No.
No.
It passed.
I vote a yes.
Mike Elam and Dave Hammond voted no.
Yes. Thanks for that, by the way.
It passed.
What are you talking about? Is there a problem with doing this? It's just a buyer area.
It would be worse, statement.
It's fine. It's done.
Okay.
Well, you got five, now you won't get a veto, maybe.
Thanks for that.
You want to expand on what you mean by that? Want to share? Okay.
I don't.
So what we just voted on, to be clear, is just to add that clause into the substitute bill.
Yes.
What you voted on is that that has to be put to every time there is a kratom sale done in St. Charles County, if, at a retailer only, because you can buy this online, you don't have to do this. So you just require that every retailer in St. Charles County has to put that on every time that they sell it.
And as a retailer in St. Charles County, it's pretty easy to do. All you have to do is program it so your receipt spits that out in the bottom of the receipt. It's not a big burden on these businesses.
Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
May I inquire, Mr. Elam?
Yes.
No.
You don't yield?
You can inquire.
You know, whatever we do, it's not going to keep anybody from getting this.
It's not.
That it's had to pick it up on the way home from work in St. Louis County or drive to somewhere else.
They can just order it online.
Or they can, yeah. What we're really doing here, I think, is having an important discussion and trying to get some information for people. And I guess my question at this point, and I understand, you know, if you don't think there's enough information to actually ban it yet.
Right.
All right? But my question is, what message are you sending to folks passing this particular bill? I mean, if we're going to send people a message about this, what is the message we're sending here? That it's because somehow it's regulated a little bit, it might be okay for you? I mean, I wish we knew for sure there was nothing wrong with it, or it was very, very dangerous. And then it'd be easy to know what we're going to do. But I... And then it'd be easy to know what we're going to do. But, I, I just, I just, I just, my question is, what is the message that we really want to send on this? And I'm afraid there's going to be some people say, "Well, you know, the county's regulating, and it must be okay."
I think the message that I'm trying to send on this, as opposed to the bill that you put forward, and I, I disagree with you on the fact of, I know there have been, um, concerns from Dr. Case about kratom.
Mm-hmm.
And I understand that. She can only point to one case in-
I know. That's why I'm not pushing you to do the ban right now.
I understand. You asked me my opinion, I'm telling you the whole thing. I put this forward only because you put forward a ban. I feel like we don't know enough to say ban. Ban to me is when you have all kinds of information-
I understand.
-that says, do you want to, you want me to talk to you?
Do, do we know enough to do what you're doing here? I mean, are people going to look at this and say, "Oh, I guess, I guess it's okay, because the county's taking care of us, they're, they're, they're regulating this."
I guess if you want to spin it that way, you can, you can try and make that case.
And what, what we have now is-
I would suggest that what you're saying right now is you're putting words into it over and above. I would never have put this forward if you hadn't put yours forward. If you hadn't said ban, I never would have done it.
So, why, so why don't we just wait and not do anything until we get more information?
Mr. Chairman, we did pass you an addendum, so let's, um, there's no point in debate.
Let's just vote it up or down, and, and let's go from there.
Well, I'd like to comment, the message I think we need to send is buyer beware. And I think this notice that Mr. Brazel's saying we should put on there says that-
Oh, no, it's definitely better than it was, and I appreciate you adopting the, the amendment. Particularly adopt, appreciate you not holding people harmless if somebody dies from it. That, that, that was my biggest problem with the, with the original bill.
This stuff does help a lot of folks. I mean, and, you know, so-
Are we, are we, can just vote this down?
Yeah, I don't think-
Or completely withdraw and wait for, for more, more information?
I'm, the industry itself has said, and, and that's where a lot of this language came from, the industry has said, "Let's regulate it and make sure that we don't have bad players in this industry." They're trying to do the right thing. You have literally millions of people every year who take kratom, literally millions. There are a few isolated examples that people hold up as the case that said, "This is why you should get rid of this." I, I would tell you, there are literally millions of people who drive cars, and there are thousands who die every day in a car. If you use the same logic that we're using on kratom, we would ban cars in the United States of America. It, you can't make that big of a leap, in my mind. So, you put seat belts in cars to make them safer. You put speed limits in cars to make them safer. What you have in front of you with this bill is a way to try and do a buyer beware of, if you're going to take any type of supplement or medication, then be careful of what you're taking, be mindful of what you're taking, and do your homework.
Exactly, Mike, and I-
If you have a good retailer, who is a mindful retailer, who takes care of their business, and they do what's right, then they're the ones who are asking for this. It says, "Don't put me on the same level as some guy on a street corner selling something that we don't know what it is." So, this is what the industry is asking for. They're going to be trying to get this done in Jeff City, go statewide in the next session next year. And I think this shows the way that we're leading the way in St. Charles County, and the state should hopefully follow us next year.
I, I agree with you, Mike, and I, and I, I know you got a little ruffled on, on adding another layer on top of it, but I think that, that we're doing exactly what we should be doing, saying, hey, there is a little bit of buyer beware on this. There are some cases that it's potentially dangerous. We use the same analogy with the car. We tell people, don't, you know, don't operate your car if you've already been drinking. True. We're going to tell people, you know, don't use this product, or think twice about using it. Ask your doctor if you are also using these other medications. I think it's appropriate, and I, I think it's a step in the right direction.
I think we should just wait till there's more information.
Then we do nothing.
Yeah, it's just, I, I'm, I'm going to call the question on this one and vote it.
Okay. All right, I should call the question.
Have we accepted the substitute bill with the amendment?
Yes, he, he did the-
We accepted the amendment. Have we accepted the amended substitute bill?
No.
No.
I don't think-
We have, we have to accept the amended substitute bill first-
Okay.
-before you can vote no.
Is there a motion to amend? Is there a motion to accept the substitute bill?
Some moved.
Some moved.
A second?
Second.
Yes. All those in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Seeing none?
We can only have one chair at a time.
We're ready to put in the title and call the rule.
Amended substitute bill number 4721, an ordinance creating a new chapter, an amended ordinance creating a new chapter 237 in the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, in order to register those engaged in the sale of kratom.
Any questions or comments on bill 4721?
Amended substitute bill number 4721, an amended ordinance creating a new chapter 237 in the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO, in order to register those engaged in the sale of kratom. Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilman White?
No.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Bill 4721 has passed. Are there any, are there any other bills to take off the table?
Make a motion, we remove 4718 from the table.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. 4718 is on the table.
I think we should, um, officially just do away with this or remove it from consideration by the action that we just took on the last bill.
Make a motion to remove it from consideration. Isn't that right?
I believe John has to-
Right.
That's what we thought, you sponsored this bill.
Yes, uh, are there, is there anybody else that concurs with removing 4718?
I concur.
All right, I do.
I do.
Okay. Uh, the proper amount of people has concer, uh, concurred, so, bill 4718 has been withdrawn for consideration.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any other business?
I have announcements.
Pardon me?
I have announcements when you're ready.
Okay. Move on, announce, miscellaneous?
Yes, sir. Um, I just want to announce that, uh, folks, if you've got some time, on Saturday, the Missouri State Horseshoe Championship takes, it takes place at, um, at the Quail Ridge Park. And if you've never been there before, it's something to see. The guys, though those, guys and ladies, I should say, throw those horseshoes like a machine. It's amazing how, how accurate they are. They also have a really cool, um, museum of the history of pitching horseshoes there. And if you really want to see a really bad horseshoe thrower, I'll be throwing out the first horseshoe, okay? So, it's kind of a cool thing. It's Saturday morning, starts at nine at Quail Ridge Park. Additionally, uh, this weekend is St. Paul's Annual Church Picnic. It's a 100-year-old-plus tradition where we cook the beef in old-fashioned wood-fired kettles. There's entertainment for kids there. There's continuous music all day long, and of course, being St. Paul, there's plenty of cold beer, okay? And lastly, I would personally like to thank Mike Klinghammer for his service on this council, and I'm, I'm, I'll be sorry to see him go.
Okay. At that note, I'll, I'll officially announce that, that I have resigned my position as a, as a county council member. Um, I have, fortunately, the city of St. Charles, um, has asked me to come and, and help them do economic development activities, um, on, on that side of the street. Um, I have, um, a couple of things I'd, I'd like to say to first, to all of you guys. Um, I have thoroughly enjoyed the last seven years. Um, even when we're debating and fighting, I, I enjoy it. Um, I've told my wife for a long time that I get to come fight with you six, and I can go home and be, uh, be nice to her. So, you have, you have saved my marriage for 32 years, so I, I certainly appreciate that. The last seven years, I, I, I've learned a tremendous amount about, um, just a different way of, of delivering the same, uh, services, the same local, same, we do the same things as the city of St. Charles. Uh, we do it in a different fashion. Um, some things we do a little better, some, I'm not so sure. But, uh, it, uh, it's been an education for me. Um, I have met a lot of really great people. Um, it is, um, I, I got introduced to, uh, a wider area of, of residents, and I've, I've enjoyed working, uh, with them, working through their issues, and finding resolutions to, uh, to most of those problems. On a personal note, um, the employees here at, at St. Charles County are absolutely exemplary. They really, um, the effort that they put forward, the passion and the care that they give to delivering those services is absolutely astonishing, and I, and I certainly respect all the people that I've, I've come in contact with. Um, there are two that I want to, uh, talk about in particular, though. They actually sit next to each other here. We've saw John and Jennifer step up and, um, take a leadership role in, um, county government. Um, they have, they have the best trainer, um, in the world, in the, in the form of Steve and Joanne. Um, it has been an honor to work with both of you, and I will, I will miss our debates, as well as our, uh, finding ways to, to come to getting things taken care of. So, uh, I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Mike, as chair, I'd like to thank you for your service. You've been a tremendous dedication to your district. They, they, you serve them proud, and, uh, we will miss you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. All right. Enough, enough of that. Let's, uh, let's make a motion for adjournment, and, uh, we can, we can move on.
All right, very good.
But I will be back before you guys, as-
Oh, wait a minute here. Don't, I don't get to say anything.
Oh, okay. The floor's yours.
Mike, thank you for everything. It's been a pleasure working with you. As I, as I told you before, uh, as county executive, I'm very disappointed that you're going to be leaving. But, as a resident of the city of St. Charles, I'm very happy what you're going to be doing, and I think you can make a, a tremendous difference, uh, in our hometown. And, uh, want to wish you all the best, and if there's any way we can help you, make sure you let us know.
I certainly appreciate that, Steve. Thank you very much.
I'm still upset with you, because now I don't know who I'm going to be able to go talk with when I'm ready to jump off the ledge. You were always the person who brought me back.
You always talk to me, Mike.
I know. You're normally the person that makes me want to jump off the ledge. Congratulations. We wish you the best. Motion to adjourn?
We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
You'll just want to stick around, Charlie?